Welcome everybody to the Thursday, July 15, 2021. Formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For roll call, the persons I see present, I see we have a full house other than Phoebe Martin, who I believe has excused absence due to vacation. I don't see her online. I see Hensh, Signs, Townsend, Padron, Nolte, and Craig. So we certainly have a quorum, and I think we're ready to go. So roll calls done. Item number three, public discussion of any item not on the agenda. Now is the opportunity for any member of the public who would like to address Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For an item that's not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. Please raise your hand electronically so you can be called on. Second call for public input. We'll go ahead and go on to item number four, under Comprehensive Planning and Zoning Code Amendment Items. This is a presentation on the Proposed South District Plan Amendment CPA 21-0001 to facilitate the adoption of form-based zones in standards REZ 21-0005. And is this you again, Kirk?
Yep, I will be continuing from the presentation that I had started last time, going into detail on the code. So you can all see my screen. I did just want to remind everyone, I know that we had shared this last time, but everything that I'm going to be showing, the code that we're referring to, it is available online right now. So if you go to the city's website and look up Form-Based Zones Standards, South District, all the documents that I'll be covering are right here at the top of the page. The code itself is this first one, and the appendixes I will also be going over tonight. So that includes other changes to Title 14 and 15, and then proposed changes to the South District Plan as well. So just as a reminder that that exists, I know that that was sent to you after our last meeting, so you should have that handy. And as far as the presentation for tonight, you know, like I said, I'm just going to be going over, continuing the presentation from last time, going over the rest of the code, and then going over those other items that are a part of the code as appendixes. So last meeting, we did start, you know, with the general discussion about why, how this process came to be, what's been done so far, and went over a brief summary of amendments and the examples of the types of neighborhood this code will produce, and then also the justifications for the proposed amendments, both to the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. I had also started talking about the intended principles of the code, some of the zones, the U standards, site standards, and civic spaces. I will do a very, very brief overview, but if you were unable to attend the last meeting, or if you need a refresher, feel free to revisit the recording that was provided last time. So that should be available online as well for anyone who needs an update. So the plan for tonight is to go through the remaining chapters, which there are five chapters on building type standards, architectural element standards, frontage type standards, thoroughfare type standards, and affordable housing incentives. Those are all part of the Title 14 2H. And then there's also other changes to Title 14, which I will briefly cover. They're pretty minor, and then some changes to our subdivision code, which is one of the ways that this code will help be implemented. And I'll also go over some of the draft changes to the comprehensive plan. And then finally, we'll summarize the next steps that'll happen through this process. So with that, I will start to get into the nitty-gritty of the code. Like I said, I did just want to briefly touch on the items that we discussed last time. So as a reminder, the first section of the code was the intent and principles, which basically talks about how form-based codes are different than our current development standards and the process that is used to implement them. So through our regular development process and the minor changes that happened to make sure that these standards are met. I went over the zones as well, there are five zones. I also went over the U standards, which are the uses that are allowed in the different zones and the site standards, which affects what development looks like in those zones, specifically regarding landscaping, parking design, screening, et cetera. And then finally, I went through civic space types, which are essentially types of public or private open space that might be provided in these areas. Now, I did want to briefly refresh you on what the different zones were, because those are an important component, obviously, of the zoning code, and I will be referring to these zones throughout. So I want to make sure that these are fresh on your mind. Again, it is organized by transects, so that's what the T stands for, with T3 referring to suburban zones and T4 referring to urban zones. So T3 is a lower density, T4 is a higher density. And within those broader transects, we have two T3 zones, Neighborhood Edge, which is the lowest density, you'll see that in the upper left, and Neighborhood General, which is the next highest density in the bottom left. And then for T4, there are three subzones. We have Neighborhood Small in the upper right, Neighborhood Medium in the right center, and then Main Street on the bottom right. I will go over the Future Land Use map again that I showed last time when I go through building types. So other than reminding you what the zones are and kind of how they fit in in terms of increasing density, just wanted to bring that back to mind. So with tonight's standards, at least three of the sections relate to different types and some broader design standards that are incorporated in those. So it will be a lot of lists, and I will try to make it as entertaining as possible and as comprehensible as possible for you. So I appreciate your patience with this. But the first section is the sixth section of the Title 14 2H, which is the building type standards. So within this section, the first two subsections are the purpose and the general building type standards, and the rest are all of the different building types that would be allowed in each zone. So they do differ by zone. As I go through my presentation, I group them by terms that are probably familiar to you, such as houses, duplexes, et cetera. So I will, that's how it is organized for this part of the presentation. In terms of those general standards that I mentioned, I want to touch on a couple of them that I think are important for you. So first, the scale of the building types are really based on the intended character of the zone, and that's how we determine what different building types are allowed in each zone. And you'll notice that throughout, it describes how scale versus block scale. So house scale are smaller buildings. That is what you'd expect to be the size of a house, up to a large house, and the block scales, when you start to get over an individual building size, it covers most of the block. And the purpose of the scale of this zoning code is to create pedestrian-oriented buildings and also pedestrian-oriented public realms, like the streetscape. In terms of building types and as they relate to design sites, which I talked about last time, the size of the design site is regulated by the zone, so it's not included in this, but it is governed by the building type. Typically, within each design site, there would be one building per design site. Some certain buildings do allow multiple buildings, but for the most part, it's one and one. And in some cases, the carriage house is an accessory type, which would be allowed in addition to certain building types. And just to refresh your memory, when we're talking with design sites, often design sites are going to be concurrent with the parcels, like you would see in a typical single-family development. But in some cases, you could have a larger parcel that has multiple design sites. So if you're able to fit, for example, a half-block as its own parcel, you would be able to have multiple design sites with multiple buildings on those design sites. I also wanted to touch on frontages, because each building type needs at least one frontage type. And that frontage would contain the primary entrance and has to be along a street or civic space. There are some exceptions, such as a cottage court, which I'll talk about a little bit, because that's a unique design or building type. And then finally, I want to touch on diversity of building types, because within each block, this code requires that there are at least two different building types. There is an exemption for the T4 Main Street requirement, which is basically the commercial zone in here. So that doesn't require the diversity of housing types, but within the neighborhood-based zones, we do want to see a diversity of building types. So there are 10 choices. This is what it looks like within the code itself, and I will basically be summarizing what they are, so you just have an idea. So the first one that you'll find in the code is the carriage house. So this one is a little unique. It is an accessory structure that can be added to other building types. It does not count as its own building type, it is strictly accessory. So it is allowed in all zones, and there's only one dwelling unit that would be allowed in a carriage house. Typically, you would see it on the rear of a design site, you know, above a garage. It doesn't have to be residential, it could also be a commercial space. Let's say you're a small business owner, you want a workshop, a carriage house could be used for that. But with the carriage houses, they would only be two stories max, the relatively small buildings with a max width of 32. So I will also be talking about the size of the buildings in terms of width and the size in terms of height, so you get a feeling for the building bulk that we're expecting for each building type. The next set of building types are houses. So there are two different ones, house large and house small. This is essentially what we would currently classify as a single-family use or a single-family detached use. The house large is what you would find in the T3 Neighborhood Edge Zone. So that is the lowest-density building type. You know, it's a medium-to-large-size detached building. It would only have one unit, like a single-family detached unit. It would only be allowed to be up to two and a half stories tall, and the maximum width would be 95 feet. And that would include a 55-foot main body, and then there would be wings that could be allowed up to 20 feet on each side. Those wings do have to be set back from that main body or extended out from the main body by an offset. And part of the reason we have the distinction between main body and wings is to make sure that the building facade is broken up in a way that doesn't create just a large blank facade. So the house large is the less dense. When you get into the T3 Neighborhood General, that's a smaller unit. It doesn't have quite as large of a lot size that would be allowed within the zone. And again, that's two and a half stories tall, and that would have a maximum width of about 75 feet. So that's 35 feet for the main body and then 20 feet for the wings. The next set of building types are duplexes. So there are two different kinds, side-by-side and stat. Side-by-side is probably typically what you're used to seeing. That would be allowed in both T3 zones, that would be Neighborhood Edge and Neighborhood General. Within each duplex, you would have, you know, two units within a design site. And again, that would be a medium-to-small building. The idea is that it would be about the same size as a house large or just a single-family home generally. So they would be allowed to be two and a half stories tall. They would be narrower than a house large would be allowed to be, so it would be 48 feet on the main body. But that, again, helps ensure that these are house-scale buildings rather than, you know, getting lots of blank facades. As far as garages fit in, you can have garages on the front, but they have to fit within these building standards. And so in some cases, it's going to be challenging, such as with a side-by-side duplex, but it is possible to have garages on the front. The duplex stacks looks even more like a house, essentially, where you have two dwelling units, one on top of the other. Again, it's a small-to-medium detached building, you would have two units. It would only be allowed in the T3 Neighborhood General Zone, as it is a slightly denser form of duplex, but they would have the same height standard of two and a half stories. But it could be a little wider, up to 66 feet, which would include a 36-foot main body and two 15-feet wings. The next building type is a little more unique. It's not something that's currently exactly allowed by our code. It's called a cottage court. So this is where you have a courtyard that would have buildings arranged around the outside of it, and the courtyard would basically act as shared common space rather than having private individual rear yards. So it is a little different than some developments that we get. We've had some interest in this development type, and it's been difficult to try and accommodate it. It would be allowed in the T3 zones, so Neighborhood Edge and Neighborhood General. And it would also be allowed in the T4 Neighborhood Small, but the idea is that it would fit with existing single-family homes or duplexes. So it could have three to nine units, with the rear cottage being one to three units. Depending on the number of units, it would affect the size of the court. So more units means that the court has to be larger to help disperse, you know, the concentration of units. As far as height goes, like I said, it fits in with existing single-family buildings, and it actually has a smaller height, where these buildings can only be one and a half stories tall. And as far as width goes, the rear cottage can be 40 feet, the rest of the cottages have to be less than that. So it does create, you know, house-scale buildings along the street facade. And this is one of those examples where the main entrances would actually be on the court rather than on the street, because the court is kind of the central focus point of this building type. Next, we move into multiplexes. There are a small and large variety. So this is where you start to get into what our code would consider multifamily currently. The multiplex small would be allowed in the T3 Neighborhood General and would be allowed in the T4 Neighborhood Small, and it would allow up to three to six units. Those units could be stacked, they could be side-by-side, but the idea is, again, that it's approximately the size of a large house. So it's scaled to fit with low-to-moderate intensity neighborhoods is the intent of it. As far as building height with that, you know, it'd be two and a half stories. It could be up to 90 feet wide, which is about the same as a house large, with a 50-foot main body and then two 20-foot wings. As we move into the multiplex large, that is allowed in the T4 Neighborhood Medium. So this is, once you get past the three least-dense zones, it would be in the fourth zone. This is a medium-to-large-size building. It's seven to 12 units that would be allowed. Again, some of these could be side-by-side, some of them could be stacked with a shared entry, but it's intended to fit with moderate-intensity neighborhoods or maybe a small portion of lower-intensity neighborhoods. But the max height does get taller with this building type, so you can get up to three and a half stories. And the max width gets up to 100 feet, so slightly larger than some of these more house-scale buildings. But it would be a 60-foot main body and two 20-foot wings. And as to where these building types are allowed, I will also go over that as they relate to the zones as well. But I just wanted to give you more detail on what these look like before I go into where they might be located. Another more unique building type is the townhouse, because it's pretty versatile in how it is implemented within the form-based zones. So this is a small-to-large house, can be attached, may be detached, but it consists of one unit typically, can be three in certain zones. And it would be located in moderate-to-high-intensity neighborhoods or near a neighborhood main street. And basically, as you go in more dense zones, it allows the runs to be larger and it allows more units per design site. So as you look at the T3 zones, it's first allowed in T3 Neighborhood General. So that would allow townhouses in a row of two to three units with one unit per site, with a max height of two and a half stories, up to a row width of 90 feet, so approximately like a house large again. When you start to get in the T4 zones, that's where you are allowed to have rows of four to eight units. And the T4 Neighborhood Small, the T4 Neighborhood Medium would still maintain one unit per site. In the Neighborhood Small, you would be up to two and a half stories. The Neighborhood Medium would get up to three and a half stories. And you can see that the row lengths increase as you get to more dense zones as well. Now, the most dense iteration of the townhome is when you get into the T4 Neighborhood Medium Open Zone, which is where you could allow some commercial uses, and then that Main Street Zone. So that's where you can start to have, you still have four to eight townhomes in a row. You can have up to three stacked. So it gets a little confusing when you start, because like I said, it's a pretty versatile use, but again, in those denser zones, it's up to three and a half stories. In the less-dense zones, it's two and a half stories roughly. And then when it's still in the T3 transect, you would only have two to three in a row. When you get to the T4 transect, you can have four to eight in a row. So that's the townhome, like I said, pretty versatile use as to how it's implemented. Now, another variety of multifamily is the courtyard building. So this is a different building type than the multiplex, similar to, as cottage court is to a single-family home, this is to a multifamily home, where you have a central court that replaces, you know, rear yard open space. So the courtyard building small would be allowed in T4 Neighborhood Small and T4 Neighborhood Medium zones. And they could have 10 to 16 units. But as far as building height goes and as far as it breaks up along the facade, the T4 Neighborhood Small would only be two and a half stories, whereas the T4 Neighborhood Medium Zone would allow up to three and a half stories. However, the max width does remain the same at about 100 stories, and you would have standards as to how large that courtyard needs to be that's located within the zone. And so along the street facade, the size of the building is broken up by the presence of that courtyard. As you get into the courtyard building large, this is only allowed in that T4 Main, yeah, T4 Main Street Zone, and it allows 18 to 24 dwelling units. Again, they can be stacked or together, but they have that common courtyard. And this building type can be up to three and a half stories, but the main body, again, remains 100 feet. And so a lot of that excess building bulk would be located on the rear of the site. With the courtyard buildings, these are some of the buildings that are allowed to have more than one building on a design site, where you can also have it where, instead of just a courtyard in the middle, you can have separate buildings with the courtyard between them. So it does allow a slightly different configuration than some of the other, like a multiplex would. But again, the building bulk is broken up by that courtyard. And then the final building is the Main Street Building. So this is the most general building. It's probably most appropriate for commercial uses. It is small to large, it's only allowed in the Main Street Zone, but the amount of dwelling units is unrestricted, it's set by the housing code and the building code. So in that way, it's more similar to the riverfront crossing zone, where, you know, you have to meet the minimum standards for safety, but if you can fit them within the building envelope, then they can work. But they're intended to provide, you know, a vertical mix of uses, typically with some ground floor commercial and residential above, as you would see in a typical Main Street. That being said, the max height, again, is three and a half stories, and there is a max width for the body, it's 200 feet. But this is, especially when you start getting into block-scale buildings, this is the prototypical block-scale building. Some of the other buildings, such as larger runs of townhomes, also get towards that block scale as well. But a lot of these buildings are designed to be house-scale buildings, and that's part of the point of providing missing-middle housing types that we really wanted to cover. So as far as where these different building types would be allowed as they relate to the zones, this is the Future Land Use Map that would be incorporated through the Comprehensive Plan. I'll talk about the Comprehensive Plan later, but I wanted to refresh your memory as to where the different building types could go. So when we're talking about Neighborhood Edge, you know, these typically exist near the edges of existing low-density development. The Neighborhood Edge is three or two and a half stories. It's the type that allows the house large, the side-by-side duplex, and the cottage court. So you can see where those are in this map, generally on the edges. The Neighborhood General is located in the center of neighborhoods away from busier roads typically. They're still two and a half stories, it's still that T3 transect, so that suburban transect. Again, you can see them on the map, but they would allow the house small, the both variety of duplexes that is stacked inside-by-side. They would allow multiplex small and cottage court, and they would also allow townhomes in runs of two to three units. As we get into the T4 zones, those are denser zones. So these ones are along major intersections or minor roads, and they are still two and a half stories as the Neighborhood Small Zone. They would allow the multiplex small, the courtyard building small, a townhome in a run of four to eight, but two and a half stories, and then the cottage court. And then the denser zones are located along major corridors or major intersections. In some cases, they're along single-loaded streets. So this is the Neighborhood Medium T4 transect. These buildings can get up to three and a half stories tall, but you can see that it's primarily along the Colister and in the southeast, there along the single-loaded streets where there's open space on the other side. And then finally, the T4 Main Street, which is that densest zoning category, is located at the corner of McColster and Sycamore, and it would allow the Main Street Building, it would allow the Courtyard Building Large, and it would allow townhouses in a run of four to eight, and they could be stacked up to three. So as far as building type standards relate to our current zoning code, it's a new-ish concept for zoning code. Most of our zones do not consider building types, but our riverfront crossings does have different building types. So it's more similar to what we do south of downtown, but we're carrying it over into some of our greenfield zones as well. Now, one of the biggest differences is that it distinguishes the building form from the use. So the way that we currently define uses in our zoning code is where we say, "single-family." We have duplexes as a separate use, and we have multifamily as a different use. In this case, we are saying, everything that is, you know, house-scale buildings is a missing-middle use or a missing-middle housing type, and it is a different use. So the building type is completely separated from the uses in that way. That's just kind of a different way that we're looking at dealing with what buildings look like, because mostly what we're interested in is what is the experience with the public realm and how does that interact with surrounding properties as well. Again, building type is required per design site. It does create some new standards that we haven't historically reviewed. So it includes some min and max bulk requirements. You know, I primarily focused on building width and building height, since that's really what characterizes a house scale from a block-scale building. And it does regulate the number of units. So our current zoning code regulates by density of lot sizes. So this is a little different in that, instead, we are saying, these are the number of units that can be within an existing building type. And it does create a diversity, or it does create a requirement for housing diversity on each block. And then finally, these building type standards, you know, are incorporated into the revised processes that we talked about last time. So they would be included on the preliminary plat, and they would get finalized in the neighborhood plan. And then as they come to build, you know, they'd either do a building permit or they'd do a site plan interview, depending on the use and number of units. And that's the time where we would check it against the neighborhood plan to make sure that it was in compliance with all of these standards. There is a possibility of administrative change, but that would happen, you know, on the neighborhood plan as well. And if a design site can accommodate, let's say, you know, in one case, it could accommodate a house small, but it's also large enough to accommodate a statue duplex. You know, they could switch those out administratively, update the neighborhood plan, and then that would be there for the future to be documented. So the next set of standards is Architectural Element Standards. Again, it has the first two sections and then a set of four different elements that are regulated by this code. In general, it is similar to what some of our current site development standards are. So for example, we have multifamily site development standards. We have four different sets of commercial site development standards, and we have different sets of single-family zone site development standards. So it's similar to those, but it works with both those building-type standards and the frontage-type standards to try and provide visual interest and make sure that, you know, the interaction with the public realm provides walkable, neighborhood-friendly environments. So where they apply is on the facades that are on streets or civic spaces. You know, again, we're looking at the public realm, and so on the rear of buildings, these standards do not apply. But corner buildings do need to have equal architectural treatments. But corner buildings do need to have equal architectural treatments. So that is both on front and side street facades. We do have a window requirement on residential homes where at least thirty percent has to be. Windows or doors, which which is called glazing. That is a standard that we haven't typically. Haven't typically. Regulated with residential uses typically. We only look at that for commercial uses, but that's also a standard for residential uses in this code. And then the stairs have to be integrated into the building. So this is similar to some of our site development standards that we have currently where you can't have. You know, exterior stairs on multifamily buildings. It's to ensure that. You know, we've had some developments where we haven't appreciated that in the past. And so that's where those standards got adopted. So as far as the four sets of. Architectural elements that we're looking at, the first is the tripartite facade articulation. This applies to buildings that are at least two stories and basically what that says is you have to have a base, a middle. And a top and you have to use architectural elements to distinguish them to create some horizontal. Visual interest. So the ground floor has to be articulated by some sort of string cornices or string courses, course expression, awnings, canopies. Could be different materials, but it doesn't require that you have different materials. It could be colors. It could be. Any number of ways, but as long as you're distinguishing the base from the other portions, that standard can be met. The middle area really only applies if it's three stories, because then you would have, you know, a second story that would that would be the middle. And then the top would include the uppermost floor. And or the parapet or eaves. So in those cases, you know, they have to be delineated by certain features. Something to create visual interest on the horizontal plane, like I said. The next one is architectural recessions, which would apply to buildings of at least two stories. That are over fifty feet long. So essentially, if it's a house scale building. You know, we want it require that a house. Has that kind of facade articulation. So. You know, if if it's a multifamily that's the size of a house, we don't make these standards apply. And we also do explicitly exclude houses and duplexes from having to deal. Or having to comply with the architectural recession standards. So the purpose of it is really to modulate the appearance of the building. You can recess a portion of the facade, whether that be an entry, whether that be balconies. But it has to be carried through the building and it has to be. Twelve to twenty feet and up to two locations with longer buildings requiring. A wider recess. And then that depth would be up to sixteen inches. And again, a lot of these standards. The goal is to provide visual interest, which helps create, you know, walkable neighborhoods. So. Architectural recessions are one of the ways that we do that currently within our code, but this is a little bit of a different way than we do it currently. Another one is a corner element. So this is actually a voluntary. Architectural element. That could be used on Main Street Buildings. And the idea is that you want to provide, you know, emphasis to corner and it helps shape the public realm. On those corners. So you can see an example in this image here where there's. You know, a slight bump out. So the idea is that this can project three feet forward from the facade. With a ten by ten footprint, it would be carried up through that corner elements. And it could then exceed that the zone height that would typically be allowed. By a little bit to create that visual interest on the corner and to help define the public realm. But again, that one would be a voluntary element. That's not a required element. And then finally, the rooftop room is another voluntary element. So this this one. Each building type says whether or not it can utilize a rooftop room. Generally, the ones that can are houses duplexes, small courtyard buildings. Again, those are listed within the zone, but the idea being that this can be an enclosed or unenclosed. Portion on the top of the roof. There there's a footprint that it can be, so it can't just be another blanket additional story. But it would have to be somewhat set back. It has to have. Openings or or windows of some sort, and it has to be consistent with the primary building, both in terms of its sighting and its roofing, but. It's another building that provides visual interest and it can provide a neat feature on buildings. But that one is not required. It is voluntary as well. So the architectural elements are relatively limited in this. Compared to some of our zone specific site development standards that you might find in the multifamily. Zones or that you might find in the riverfront crossing zone. The requirements are similar. But many of them are addressed through other ways that we're regulating buildings within this code. So for example, building and frontage types address lots of the standards that we would typically include in these. Sort of site design standards. So it talks about parking lot design, landscaping, building entries, exterior stairways, mechanical equipment. A lot of those things are covered in the building type and fringe type requirements. In other cases, some of the standards don't really apply in this area because it is greenfield development where you're not working within an existing. An existing historical neighborhood, for example. So in a lot of ways, it's similar in that it looks at building bulk and provides facade articulation. That would. Create visual interest. It requires tripartite articulation within the building and that's something that we require within the riverfront crossings district. And then it does require equal treatment of facades, which is something else that we require in riverfront crossings. As far as differences go, one thing that this does not cover is it doesn't regulate building materials like we current do currently do. So most of our building material regulations are located primarily in the downtown area. Or they they apply to our PRM zone, for example. Or in the central planning district. So in. In this case, you know, we didn't think that building materials needed to be regulated in the same way that we do within our current standards. Another thing that's not covered, we don't regulate windows and architectural standards in the same way that we do. So for example. In the central planning district, you know, you have to comply with. An existing architectural style. But this being a new neighborhood, it doesn't really make sense in the new neighborhood context and we don't want to limit. Architectural creativity in new areas. So we don't have any architectural standards like we would, but. That being said, we have all these other standards related to, you know, visual interest that that should hopefully address. A lot of the issues that you get with. Just your standard box building, I guess you could say. And then finally, we don't really regulate roof design in these standards, which is something that's regulated in riverfront crossings. But. Again, we didn't really think it was necessary with these and to some extent they're regulated with the building type. But it's not as explicit as it is, for example, in our riverfront crossing zone, but we don't want to limit. Architectural creativity in that way in these zones.
May I ask a question, please?
Absolutely.
On that issue or building, what? Building materials are not regulated. You said similar to how they are downtown. But how's that different than a transect for Main Street? Wouldn't that be similar to downtown? The distinction there seems pretty close.
So the the way that I would. I think the the more proper comparison for that is if you're building, for example. You know, in a neighborhood commercial zone that we have rather than the downtown zones. So we really only regulate. Building materials within certain areas. And if if we had rezoned this with our existing standards that we currently have, there really wouldn't be any material standards that would apply. And so we felt. You know, the way that we currently regulate seems like it would fit with this code. The next section is related to frontage types. So again, you have your your purpose in general standards and then you have a number of different frontage types that would be allowed. In terms of general standards, I included some diagrams just so you could see what that looked like on this page. They don't really otherwise pertain, but I wanted to make sure that you could see how the the diagrams. Help where we're trying to define things in a little more detail than we have historically within some of our. Within some of our dimensional standards. But as far as general frontage type standards go, you know. It doesn't. Necessarily restrict. Frontage types don't correspond to the uses, first of all. So the names don't limit the uses. You can have a porch on a commercial zone or on a commercial building. You can have a porch on a residential building. But really, they're guided by, you know, the zone and they're guided by the building type. That being said. Building types have to have one frontage, but they can have multiple frontages. Depending on the frontage type and depending on where it's located on the block. But the frontage type does have to be located within the facade zone, which is on the front of that building design site. In addition, you must have frontage types at front thoroughfares or a civic space. So there might be circumstances where. You know, let's say that you have a house that's fronting onto a pedestrian passage. That pedestrian passage is a civic space. You know, it could front there rather than fronting on the street, just depending on how. The building lot was oriented, although you would need equal architectural treatment on the street as well. As far as the frontages, that is where the primary individual entrance would be. They have to be able to access the street from that. And again, I I had mentioned this previously with exterior stairs. But those those entrance doors for any unit that are above ground would have to be entered from an enclosed staircase rather than. You know, from from exterior stairs. Similar to building types. We also require at least two different frontage types on each block to help provide visual interest, create a. Pedestrian friendly environment. But again, the T four Main Street is exempted from that requirement since it's kind of a unique area within the form based zones. Otherwise, there are some standards that can be adjusted. I'm not going to go into those really, but those those are in the code and I would encourage you to review view the code, but they can be adjusted for side street facades. Because that's on corner lots, those can be unique circumstances. So part of the reason we have the frontage standards is to. You know, really look at the interaction of the public and the private realm, the public realm being the right of way, which is the streets, the parking. The green space and then the sidewalk and then you get into the private yard. And really, the frontage type is that interaction with those areas. So that that's why. We implemented them, but I wanted to to kind of illustrate that so you could get a. Clearer understanding when I'm talking about the public realm versus the private realm and how those interact. These are what the standards look like. There are ten choices. So that so the first set of frontage types are porches. A lot of these are going to be really intuitive to you. I mean, I will say the names. But they are related to specific standards as well as what constitutes one. So in that way, it's similar to riverfront crossings again. But the porch projecting is one that can project into the front yard or within the front setback. And it is basically a covered structure. That can be elevated. It can be at grade. It could be one to two stories, but it has to be open on three sides. So this type of French type is allowed on all or in all zones except for the T four Main Street. As far as the dimensions go, it does require a minimum of six to eight feet. So it is usable space and it really creates. Part of the purpose of it is to create, you know, an outdoor room. That can facilitate that interaction between the public and the private realms. There is a minimum width as well with it. But it it's your standard porch that you would expect and we would expect it to be on lots of. T three zones especially. One other feature of the projecting porch is that. With the parking setback in the T three neighborhood edge zone, it's actually set from the porch. So if you have a projecting porch. You could move your garage closer to the front of the lot line than you might otherwise be able to do. So we're hoping that that provides an incentive for developers to try to add more porches to buildings. Because again, it really creates that outdoor room for folks. The other type of porch is considered an engaged porch. So that's where it's partially set back within the facade. With an engaged porch, it could have two to three sides that are within that facade. So you would expect. Obviously, the front would have to be open and potentially one of the sides. Could also be open as well. But again, it is a covered structure. It creates an outdoor room and so it. It follows similar standards to the porch projecting where it's allowed in all zones except for the Main Streets. And it has similar dimensional standards as well. I I didn't mention this the last, well, the difference between the six foot and the eight foot. The six foot and the eight foot depth really comes from how high it is above grade. So it's if it's at grade, it would require. A larger setback if it's above grade. It would require the shallower setback. The next set is the dooryard and stoop. They are probably the most versatile ones in that they are allowed in all zones. So with the dooryard, what you're looking at. Is the main facade is set back and it is defined by a wall ahead or some other. Sort of small screening that would create separation. Again, the purpose is to try and create some sort of. Outdoor room to facilitate that interaction between the public and private realms. In this case, the dimensions would be a little wider, so it would have to be ten feet deep. And fifteen feet wide and then the wall. Would only be able to be up to three feet around that area as well. So we don't want it where, you know, you're having a privacy fence there up to six feet. You don't really. You don't see it from the the public realm. We want this to be. To help that transition between the public and the private realm. With the stoop. That's one that is more. The the purpose of it is to create some separation between the public and the private realm in that. It's set up a little higher than other development standards. And so you would expect those along. Busier streets where you don't want someone walking and looking right in your window, for example. But it would have an elevated entry and the stairs could either be parallel or it could be in front, depending on how it's designed. But the stoop has has a shallower. Depth. So it could be three feet by by five feet. Again, it's a smaller area. But it would be twelve inches above grade, so it provides some of that separation. The next frontage type is the four court. So this is intended for as you're getting into denser zones, the four court specifically in the T four neighborhood medium. And the T four Main Street Zone. The idea is that the building is set near the front of the design site, but you have. Essentially, an extension of the public realm into the interior of the building. You could think of it similar to the court. It would work in in conjunction with that. As far as the the depth and width standards, it has to be at least fifteen feet wide and deep. And it does have a standard as as a height to width ratio where you don't want walls that tower over this. Four court area. You want there to be light. You want there to be air within the area. So it it has some standards to prevent it from being too tall around that area.
Excuse me. It is that area when you say the public realm, it's like a sidewalk. So anybody can go there. I mean, obviously, if there's going to be a restaurant or something there. So it's just like a. It's like a sidewalk or like the.
It would depend on the use. It is technically private space. But it should feel like it's part of the public realm. That's what I mean when I say it's extending the public realm into the space. So if it, for example, is commercial uses around it. You could see this being something like outdoor seating. If it's residential uses, it would probably. Be more of a private space. That would that would be more separated, even though it creates that visual extension of the public realm. The next. Set is the shop fronts. So there's a maker shop front and then there's just a shop front. These are typically intended for commercial buildings, although again. They're not restricted to commercial buildings, but the idea is that the facade is at the front of the design site in each of these cases. They're only allowed. In the T four Main Street Zone. But the difference is that the maker shop front. You know, is is somewhere where there's maybe industrial artisanal businesses or other businesses. That are is oriented towards retail or consumers. And it may include decorative roll down doors. Depending on the use, you could see, for example, or you could imagine, for example, a restaurant that has roll down doors that that opens up to the public. That could be there, but the goal is to to have some interaction between the public and the private realm. So there's a requirement. That at least fifty percent of that facade would have to be glazing. Uh, that at least fifty percent of that facade would have to be glazing or or windows, in other words. With the shop front, that's where you actually have a more. You know, consumer oriented commercial businesses, uh intended for service retail restaurants. Uh, and requires more substantial glazing up to seventy-five percent. Uh, there are some other standards that are related to it, but but those are the standards that I really wanted to point out is that the difference is. You know, the the shop front is for um businesses that are less customer centric, that we still want interaction. Uh, and the shop front itself is for uh more customer centric businesses. Uh, so you, for example, could imagine a maker shop front uh on the T four Main Street. Buildings that are not on the Colister, but that might be on the side streets such as Sycamore, uh depending on what those uses are.
I don't understand the glazing requirements when, I mean, I, is this. Similar to, if it it seems to me that several, and I can't even remember which chains they are, but of the. You know, fresh start, quick trip kinds of stores. That have been built lately and sometimes rebuilt. There must be a requirement for glazing, but then you look through this giant window and all you see is a wall. There's nothing in there. I'm particularly thinking of the one on the corner of. First Avenue and. Uh, Musketeen. It's on the First Avenue side, when you drive by there, you look over there and there's a giant window and a wall.
Yeah.
Is that because they were required to put the window in, but they weren't required to put anything interesting on the other side of it?
So those are glazing requirements, yes. Uh, in this case, the glazing is limited to the frontages, so it's a little different in those cases where they added in windows because. You know, that that's what the standards are. In this case, it's going to be the front of the buildings, it's not going to be the side of the buildings like it is there, um so. Uh, the intention is for it to open up into, you know, customer centric spaces rather than. A hallway as in the come and goes that you're talking about. And that's where it's tied to the frontage requirements rather than some other requirements that we have.
Got it, got it, thank you.
The the next furniture type is the terrace, so this is again meant for uh higher intensity zones, the T four neighborhood medium and. Main Street zones. The idea is that the facade is near the front of the design site, but that there's some sort of elevated surface between. This the sidewalk and that space, so you could imagine terraces, sidewalk, uh cafes there. Uh, you would typically see this more with. Uh, commercial uses, but it it can be used with residential uses, uh if there are outdoor seating areas for residents. Uh, so there are standards that it has to be, or that it can only be up to two feet above grade, and it does require a certain depth affiliated with it. Uh, but it would allow for those uh outdoor areas. And it provides some privacy similar to a stoop. And then finally, the two, the two ones of the gallery and arcade, uh they, these are the covered spaces. So the idea is that the main facade is is set back somewhat from the. From the public realm on the design site, they're only allowed in the T four Main Street zone. Uh, but there would be covered space be uh, that's not within the right of way. Um, so again, it could be one to two stories in the case of the gallery, or it could be up to three stories in the case of the arcade. Um, they're they're slightly different than how they approach it, but it's typically uh intended for commercial uses, and so. Uh, they do require um that they be used in conjunction with other frontage types. So for example, with commercial uses, they'd be used in conjunction with a shop front type. Uh, and this, this is something that you see, uh the the picture at the top is in the old market in Omaha, but you see it in a lot of older commercial areas. Uh, however, it would not cover the sidewalk, the sidewalk would be separate from these areas, these would be more similar to. Uh, again, kind of private cafe space at the front of of the building site, uh and they do have. You know, clear standards and they have depth standards, uh so that's, that's a part of it as well, but it would run along the the entire front of that facade. And as far as furniture type standards uh relate to our current zoning code, again, it's a newish concept in that. We have some similar requirements of rear front crossings. These are a little more specified, a little more detailed, I would say. Um, but the purpose is to really work with those other standards to provide visual interest to to, especially in that interaction with the public and private realms. Uh, and they are required for each design site uh within the facade zone. Uh, the standards that are incorporated as part of it. Uh, you know, it looks at size, it looks at appearance, the building and for entrance. Uh, and that diversity is required, which is something that uh we have not typically required. Or not have not historically required that in our zoning code. And then again, it's incorporated into our existing processes where it's not included on the preliminary plat like the building type. Uh, but it is included on the neighborhood plan and would be reviewed during building uh permit or site plan review. Uh, again, it could have administrative changes uh similar to building types. Uh, but with the furniture sites, it's more versatile, mainly they have to make sure that they're maintaining that diversity of of furniture types. The next set of standards uh is related to thoroughfares, so these are essentially your public streets that you would have. Uh, in some cases, they're alleys or passages. Uh, but there are several different thoroughfare types uh that are used. And really the uh they're they're built around the intended physical character of the zone. But the goal is to provide mold molding that moldy, excuse me, I've been talking a lot, multimodal. Ways of getting around the city, so this is something that we had talked about, that was asked last time, it's really the thoroughfare types where a lot of these standards. Uh, incorporate a different modes of transportation such as walking, biking, uh different vehicle types and transits. Uh, and it does require an interconnected network, uh the goal is to provide multiple routes uh through the area. Uh, which is generally required for more pedestrian friendly areas, because uh when you have extra long blocks, it makes it a lot more difficult to travel places. As far as individual standards go, a lot of these will end up as public right of ways, they won't be privately owned thoroughfares. Uh, so during the subdivision process, there is an opportunity to to tweak some of the criteria. Uh, it does have to meet certain standards to to tweak those criteria, but those would come before the planning commission. Uh, anytime there would be a subdivision, uh so that's really where you would see if there were changes to standards and that would be reviewed by both. Uh, neighborhood services or neighborhood and development services and public works. Uh, another requirement that I wanted to point out that we don't currently have incorporated in our standards are that street trees are required. Uh, so these would have to be planted either prior to acceptance of public improvements. Uh, or prior to the certificate of occupancy uh for the adjacent property, so it depends on if the property is going to be developed. If it's going to be developed but isn't developed yet, you don't want to put in street trees and then need a bulldozer to get on site. Uh, so you, instead you plant it uh when the building uh is constructed. So there are some opportunities to delay when that is built, uh you know, if if the seasons don't cooperate. Uh, but there are are also standards as to to what that looks like to ensure that the street trees are planted. Uh, at regular intervals throughout that area.
So Kirk, would that eliminate the current practice where now um where there's. Street trees re- required in the zoning, but it becomes the responsibility of the. Particular lot owner as it becomes developed, so that no longer would happen. The developer would have to plant those right up front.
Basically.
Good.
If 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 there were delays, the way that that's taken care of is. They would basically pay an S, the developer would pay an escrow for the trees that would cover the cost of installation. So if if the developer did not follow through, uh then the city would have the funds to be able to plant them themselves. So that's similar to to some other standards that we have throughout the code, that's really what it's modeled after, but the the goal is to get them to ensure that they are planted. So these are what the standards look like, again, there are ten choices, uh and where we talk about avenues, which are the first. Sets of choices, uh they correspond to major streets in the area, and a lot of them are based on our current engineering that we have for those streets. Where engineering already exists. So the first type is the Main Street, uh there are, there are two varieties of this with and without a median. Uh, but they are intended, as you'd expect, for the Main Street zone. Uh, for the Main Street with the median, it has a wider right of way width uh at a hundred feet. Uh, with the idea being that there would be fifty feet of pavement with twenty-five feet on each side with a ten foot uh median turn pocket. Um, you would have two traffic lanes, two bike lanes, uh and two parking lanes as well. Uh, as far as landscaping with this goes, and you'll see with most of the thoroughfare types, uh the expectation is that trees would be every thirty feet. Uh, so I probably won't cover it, but I might cover uh what that looks like. Uh, so i- in the the Main Street, there would be implanters, as you would imagine, in more of a downtown sort of area, and the sidewalk would really extend over to the street. Uh, so there are twenty foot sidewalks with those planters within the sidewalk. Uh, and that would be essentially McAllister along the Main Street zone that you would see. Now with the Main Street without the median, uh that's along Sycamore where it's where it's zoned, uh T four Main Street as it's shown. Uh, in the in the future land use plan, this has a narrower right of way because it doesn't have a median, so it has eighty foot right of way width. It would still have two travel lanes, I would have two parking lanes, uh but the pavement width is substantially reduced. And again, it would have trees and planters with the twenty foot sidewalk because it's a main street area. So it, again, this is really that corner uh of Sycamore and McAllister, uh where it's the Main Street zone.
A twenty foot sidewalk feels really big to me, where where do we have twenty foot sidewalks at?
Uh, basically downtown.
So downtown, there's twenty feet from the building to the street?
It might even be wider than that in spots, but I mean, if you think of downtown and then how you have. Very wide sidewalks where you have planners that are also within that area. Or if you think of your typical historic Main Street where you have the tree planners with the sidewalks. That that's really what this is replicating, so most of the the area that's not the travel lanes is intended for pedestrian traveling use. And part of that is that it allows for things like sidewalk cafes or other uses that can spill over into the right of way. Or if you have sidewalk sales where you have, you know, you have businesses that put clothes racks outside, those sorts of things.
Right. It just doesn't feel like twenty feet feels big to me, I thought, but.
It is wider than, you'll notice that it's wider than almost any other one, because even trails are typically around ten feet.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
So Kirk, can you, can you please um mention which specifically which sidewalk? That we have right now downtown is twenty-four feet, because I'm trying to like. I'm trying to visualize that and I cannot think, would that be in the. Um, like in Iowa Avenue?
Oh, I'll be honest, I can't name one offhand, I believe Washington Street has it especially wide sidewalks. Uh, so if you think along Washington Street, but in this, actually it'd be pretty similar, because in a lot of cases, these buildings are going to be three and a half stories tall. So some of those historic buildings on Washington Street are probably what I'd point you to.
Yeah, Kirk is right, this is Anne, so Washington Street in front of the U, the US Bank Building, there's a twenty foot sidewalk there. But um, across the street in front of the Java House, Iowa Chop House, that area. That sidewalk is more like thirty-five feet, um so. It's it's even wider in some parts of the downtown.
And as far, and as far as where bike lanes are are shown on the future land use map, which I I'll show that again. In a minute, um as far as where bike lanes are shown, they're generally shown corresponding to where the uh. Where the city's future bike lanes are planned uh for our. Bike plan, our bike bicycle master plan that we have. So that's really how we determine which streets have bike lanes, I know that we had talked about multimodal transportation before. But this one would be on the Colster, which you can already see the bike lanes. So it's already pretty much built in this case, although it would extend uh further to the east than it currently is. The next sets uh are also along the Colster, but this is when you're getting away from the areas that are the Main Street areas, so it's Avenue Two. Uh, and it is, there there's areas without parking and there's areas where future parking is intended to be placed. Uh, these pass through a couple different zones because it changes depending on how far you are from that Main Street commercial node. Uh, but it is in the T three neighborhood general, T three neighborhood small and T three or T four uh neighborhood medium zones. Uh, throughout that right of way, though, it is consistently a hundred feet of right of way. Uh, in areas without parking, the pavement width is seventeen and a half feet on each side, so thirty-five feet total. Uh, which includes travel lanes, bike lanes and a median turn pocket. Uh, in terms of areas where future parking is intended to be added. Um, you're looking at fifty foot pavement widths, twenty-five feet on each side, uh so those would again have. Uh, eleven foot travel lanes, bike lanes, parking lanes uh with that turn pocket. Uh, and with these areas, you're still looking at trees that are spaced uh every thirty feet. But you're also looking at continuous planters rather than individual planters as you would have in the Main Street zone. So similar to what you see in in almost any other, uh along almost any other right of way in Iowa City. Most of the time, you don't have the individual planters, you have the continuous uh landscaping there. Uh, for sidewalks, you're looking at six feet on one side, ten feet on the other. Um, so that ten foot acts as a trail uh for pedestrians and and other users of that way. And then six feet on the other side, so again, these correspond with McAllister generally. But they could be applied elsewhere as you're starting to look at different areas of the city. Avenues three and four correspond to the other sort of major streets in the area, so for Avenue Three, you're looking at Sycamore and you're looking at Lehman. Uh, as as that's going to be developed, and then Avenue Four, you're looking at South Gilbert Street. So for Avenue Three, Sycamore Lehman, you're looking at all zones except for the Main Street zone. Uh, you're you're still having a right of way width of a hundred feet. But you're having reduced pavement width, uh that's thirty-four feet uh without any kind of median. Uh, so that's two travel lanes and two bike lanes. Uh, again, you have trees in planters, but you'll notice that these planters are a little wider than than you saw in some of the other McAllister oriented ones. Uh, you still have uh a trail sized sidewalk on one side and then you have a standard sized sidewalk on the other. Uh, for South Gilbert Streets, this passes through the the T three neighborhood general and then the neighborhood smaller neighborhood medium for T four. It has a narrower right of way of eighty-seven feet with two travel lanes and then a median turn pocket that would be there. Uh, you still have trees planted uh in a continuous planter with wide continuous planters and you would have the sidewalk in the trail sized. Uh, pedestrian paths on each side. And then generally throughout most of the neighborhood, you're going to have neighborhood streets, and there are two options for this. And they roughly correspond to how we currently uh allow local streets to be developed. So the idea is that the options are parking on one side, uh or parking on both sides, and those are, those are what's currently allowed by the zone. So they're allowing allowed in all zones except for the T four uh Main Street zone, you're looking at a seventy foot right of way width. Which is slightly larger than our current standard right of way width of sixty feet. Uh, but the idea is that we wanted it a little wider to accommodate a street trees in addition to other utilities and things that go within the right of way. Uh, for for the parking on one side, or excuse me, parking on both sides, you're looking at twenty twenty-eight feet of pavement. Uh, and you'll notice that it is a yield type uh parking arrangement, so where there aren't cars in the streets. Uh, you know, you're you're expecting there could be up to two cars on each side, but if there are cars coming at each other and it it's fully parked. Then you need some maneuvering between those two cars to negotiate. To to help create a a safe pedestrian environment, uh the reason that it's designed this way, again, it's similar to our current standards. But the goal is really to to slow the traffic on those local streets uh and to create safe environments, you know, for children. Uh, that might be in the area for pedestrians walking on the side of the streets. Uh, and and parking on the street really helps control some of those traffic speeds. Uh, as far as the parking on one side, you're looking at a narrower right of way width and you can have eighteen feet traffic. Uh, an eighteen foot traffic lane that is again a yield type uh lane. However, wi- with folks moving slow, you can actually have. However, wi- with folks moving slow, you can actually have people pass each other on that. Parking, for example, the average parking space is about nine feet, so there is adequate room for two-way traffic. Uh, but it's still expected that you would yield uh, to help reduce those traffic speeds within local streets. Uh, with these areas, you're still looking at trees every thirty feet, and you're looking at fourteen-foot planters to accommodate those trees in utilities. And you would expect five-foot sidewalks on each side. So again, this is pretty much what we have uh, for our current standards within any zone. Uh, the difference being that the right-of-way is slightly wider to accommodate the street trees that are now being required. Mike, I see you asking something.
On the sixty-foot right-of-way that we currently have in residential, what's the street width? I know that varies, but what's the standard we have?
It's the same.
It's the same, okay.
The pavement width does not change between these. The the difference is that continuous planter is wider. And I think typically developers choose to do parking on both sides. I believe that that is the preferred, just to provide additional parking for residents, but I don't think that's always the case.
But when you say continuous planter, it's in the ground. Right there. It's not like a raised three-foot planter. It's in the ground.
When I say planter.
It's a physical thing.
Yeah, when I say planter, imagine like your typical planting strip. Some people call it the parking, the area between the sidewalk and the streets.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, just wanted to clarify.
And then there are two special types. So I'll go through them one by one because they have some different standards that are kind of affiliated with them. So the first is the alley, which is allowed in all zones. Uh, it's a right-of-way width of twenty feet. You know, it would be expected behind the buildings rather than in front of them, so it's not a frontage type that buildings would front per se. Uh, but it would be fully paved with a with a twenty-foot travel lane. It does allow some room for passing of cars. But typically, you would expect this to be a yield-type travel lane as well. Within the alley, we do have a requirement for street trees still and individual planters uh, in the area between driveways, uh, but no sidewalks to be provided. Uh, if you do walk back there, you know, it's expected that traffic's minimal enough where you don't have to worry about traffic per se. It's really only to access those individual sites. So the way that the alley is a special type is that it does allow some modified lot dimensions where you can reduce the size of the design site uh, in exchange for an alley with the idea being that we want to encourage alleys behind buildings to pull some of those garages uh, off of the street frontages and create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. It's not typically required, but there are some spots where it's required. There's some opportunity to change it. Really, it's along the primary streets within the area, which is South Gilbert Street and McAllister. Every other area does not require it, though it can be provided. So if they are going to be removed along the cost or Gilbert Street, really, the bottom line is that you can't have access off Gilbert or McAllister. And so you would need to provide access to your design sites from the side roads rather than those primary roads. So when I, and I'll show you the the thoroughfare plan in a minute that shows you where those are. Those can be removed. I'll talk about that a little bit as well when I get to the subdivision standards. Uh, but those would typically be expected because we don't expect that the design sites uh, will have access to the side streets.
And would these be public roads or private roads?
We do not specify. It could be public or it could be private. Uh, I think that staff would anticipate that there would be private roads.
Okay.
The other special type uh, is, and I talked about this briefly because it's also a civic space type, but the passageway. So that is also allowed in all zones. It's also a twenty-foot width. But it would be ten feet of pedestrian path, and you would have, you know, five feet of plantings on the side of those. It does have a requirement for street trees as well, about every fifty feet within that continuous planter. Uh, it doesn't have sidewalks because that that general-purpose path in the middle is the sidewalk essentially. Uh, as far as the reason it's a special use, uh, its purpose is really to allow pedestrian connections in exchange for larger block or wider block lengths. So to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, you want multiple routes that pedestrians can take to reach their destinations. You don't need those those same kinds of accommodations for vehicles where you can travel at faster speeds versus a pedestrian. Uh, so when I get to the block standards, you'll see how this allows you to extend the block length. But it really provides that pedestrian connection through the block length in a way that doesn't necessarily provide vehicle access, but it's really for those pedestrians and bicyclists. Uh, it's also a civic space type, so you can have buildings that front the passage rather than fronting a street. Um, but those buildings still do require vehicular access. You could see certain circumstances, for example, where you have a pedestrian passage with buildings fronting it and alleys behind. So the alleys would provide the vehicular access. And the pedestrian street would provide that pedestrian access.
But the pedestrian street is the responsibility of the of either an association or the property owners, unlike a regular street.
It would be, so this would be similar to the alleys. We don't specify that it has to be public or private. It could be public or private. I know that in many cases, pedestrian passages that we require, we do have as public land.
And the city does not maintain it.
If it's public, we would maintain it, I believe. Well, it would be the adjacent property owner like you would on any street. So in the same way that you have to mow the grass between the sidewalk and the street, you would also have to mow the grass between your property line and the sidewalk here. But we would, yeah, so that's how that.
Sidewalk is is also your responsibility in this.
Correct.
Right. So someone has to go shovel it.
I I would anticipate in if uh, passages get built, that they would be privately maintained.
Okay.
But there would probably be similar to um the civic space standards that Kirk discussed previously. There would probably be some type of public access easement over them that would be um memorialized through the subdivision process that would allow anyone to to use to use the the passage.
So as far as visualizing where these thoroughfare types are imagined, you can see that the primary streets are the darker colors. Those are the avenues that I've talked about. So you can see that where the main street is shown is pretty limited, uh, really limited to the the west side of McAllister for a couple blocks. Uh, and then the main street uh, without the median is really one of those side streets there that would kind of be that central uh, commercial area. Uh, otherwise, most of the areas within the developments would be local streets, those neighborhood streets, which again are similar to our current standards that we have. Um, and pedestrian passages would be added in uh, if developers, for example, wanted to try and have longer blocks and and provide less vehicular streets, they could replace them with pedestrian streets. And then as far as alleys go, you can see here that the alleys are currently shown primarily along those major streets uh, where they would be required unless you can provide access uh, from the side lots. So you could imagine along the coaster, for example, that you would actually be able to have you know, side access to those lots and the alley wouldn't be required. But along Gilbert Street, it might be more difficult just because of the way that those alleys or that those blocks are oriented on the future land use map. Uh, you'll notice that there's another alley in there in a couple other places, and usually they are tied to in one case, it's tied to being to fronting a pedestrian passageway uh, or civic space. So it provides vehicular access to where there currently isn't vehicular access uh, just west of Alexander School on this map.
What if, since we use the, I don't want to pick on them, but we used come and go as an example for something else, but say a that kind of store or a gas station and a, you know, fresh foods is, I mean, food combo combo kind of thing wants to build on the corner of McAllister and Sycamore. Is that something that could happen?
I would have to look back at the use standards. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. Basically, you would have to follow all of the use standards that we have and the design standards as well. Um, but that's something that we can get back to you on uh, for the the next meeting when we have a bit of time to take a look at that.
I'd be interested in knowing the answer to that, and if they can't build there, is there any place in here that that type of operation could be built?
Yeah, we we can get you an answer on that similar to, we had that memo that we provided to you with some of our responses.
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
So as far as thoroughfare types go, then, you know, this is a completely new concept because a lot of it is going to be actually publicly owned land. Uh, but it builds on code requirements from our streets that we currently have. It provides some additional standards with those, and it the goal is really to ensure that multimodal access is possible within the neighborhood. Um, so it looks at street width, lanes, on-street parking, um, looks at building entrances. And frontage diversities is a holdover from the last one, so I apologize for that. As far as to the way that it's incorporated into new processes, um, it would be included on the preliminary plat and finalized in the preliminary plat, which is when public ownership uh, would occur for these thoroughfare types. Uh, like other types that are in this code, there is a possibility of administrative changes. Uh, you can add or take away passageways if they meet certain standards, uh, or you can swap out neighborhood streets. Uh, but obviously, those need to be finalized at final plat since that's when the city would take ownership of a lot of it. And then finally, uh, the the last chapter of the fourteen-two H code update uh, is for affordable housing incentives. So this is something that has been added on uh, since since we had the initial public review draft. Uh, it really, it mirrors some of our standards that we have in the front crossings. It is how we looked at this. But in this case, it's a voluntary uh, set of standards. So the idea is that within the city, we do have some mandatory affordable housing policies. You know, we have the annexation policy, uh, of which a lot of this area is going to be subject. These standards would not be able to use those required affordable housing units that would not be able to take advantage of this. But if additional voluntary units were provided, they would be able to take advantage of some of these uh, incentives. Uh, it also has to be in a form-based zone, so it doesn't apply to to other zones within our area. Uh, but it has to be for onsite affordable housing. So I know that we discussed last time about fee and lieu housing. In this case, since it's voluntary, it would have to be provided onsite. They can't just pay a fee and use these standards. So what the standards look like, uh, we have a twenty-five percent density bonus where any additional unit uh, could be or has to be affordable. So in this case, you're looking at building types that have three or more units. Uh, and they could then, let's say if you had four units, you could provide five units, for example, uh, within that building type, but you would still be subject to the other standards uh, that are required there. Uh, there's also a parking reduction where the affordable units would not be required uh, to have parking. Again, that's for the minimum parking standard purposes. It does not it does not mean that there won't be parking. Uh, it means that that would be up to the the developer to include. And then there is flexibility from some other certain standards, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. But I already talked a bit about the bigger in the bigger picture there where it's similar to RFC supplements or mandatory policies. But one of the other ways that we've looked at this is that we're hoping that it will encourage mixed income developments. Because, for example, you could have in a building with four units that are market rate, if you provide an additional unit that is affordable, you would have a better mix of different incomes within each development. And so that's really part of our hope of providing, you know, diverse diverse housing opportunities for different folks within our community. Um, but we also hope that will increase the number of units produced and hopefully incentivize some who might not otherwise consider affordable housing within this area.
So is there going to be a time limit on that affordable housing?
Yes. I I will go over the the actual standards as to how that is uh, enforced. The first, I wanted to talk briefly about the incentives again. I talked on them briefly, but I wanted to talk about the adjustments first. So as far as the adjustments go, there are, you'd be allowed one adjustment to a zone the zone standards and one adjustment to building type standards that are specified in the code. Uh, they would have to make a, or staff would have to make a finding that it fits into uh, the site, fits into the neighborhood characteristics, uh, and is consistent with the intent of that standard being modified. Uh, so that does provide some protection if there's a scrupulous developer who's trying to, you know, manipulate the system to create something that just frankly doesn't fit the neighborhood, um, that would be, uh, staff would be able to to stop that. Uh, for the zone standards that that can be adjusted, you know, we look at design site depth and design site width. So those can be adjusted by fifteen feet in terms of depth and fifteen percent for width. Uh, it also looks at the area within the facade zone uh, can be reduced by twenty percent. As far as building type standards uh, that could be modified, building width could be adjusted by fifteen percent. And building height could be increased by a half a story. So tho- those are the the standards that could be allowed. Now, there would be an opportunity uh, to provide additional minor adjustments if those affordable housing units are further restricted in terms of who they'd be provided for. Generally, the affordable housing units would be available for owners uh, at eighty percent AMI. Uh, and I'll talk about what that means in a minute. Uh, or sixty percent AMI for renters. If those were reduced to fifty percent, then they would be allowed to have uh, another zone and another building type adjustment subject to those same eligibility standards. So I know I'm going to be throwing out a lot of acronyms, uh, so feel free to ask me. Uh, my background was initially doing community development and affordable housing, so I tend to fall back into that pretty quickly. Uh, in terms of the general requirements, then, they can be met by providing either onsite owner-occupied affordable units or rental units. Uh, the owner units would be subject to sales price limits, and they would be at eighty percent AMI. So if you're talking eighty percent AMI for a family of four, that's a family that makes just shy of eighty thousand dollars. If you're talking about an an individual person, um, they would be making about fifty-five, just shy of fifty-six thousand dollars.
Kirk, what's the current AMI for Iowa City? Is it like a hundred thousand?
Uh, I can tell you that on the next slide, I have the actual income limits. I don't know what a hundred percent AMI is, but that's where I'm pulling these numbers from. Uh, they get updated annually. But it's it's based around a family of four and based on the family income in Iowa City. Uh, so for rental units, then you're looking at sixty percent AMI. Uh, but they would be subject to HUD fair market rents and Lytech income limits. So again, I'll go over those in a second in more detail where you can see concrete numbers, so it's not so abstract. But the term of affordability would be twenty years that would be required, and that would be secured with an agreement and a deed restriction on the property. So even if the owner was to sell it, they would still have to abide by these standards. Uh, and it would be administered through some administrative rules that are adopted by the city. So when we're talking about, you know, what these income limits look like, they vary by household size. Uh, but with the sixty percent being renters and eighty percent being owners, you can see that for a family of four, eighty percent is, like I said, just shy of eighty thousand. Uh, the renters would then be just shy of sixty thousand. And that changes where it's it's lower if you're a single person, uh, but if you have more people in your family, those income levels go up. Uh, for owner-occupied properties, there's also the HUD purchase limits. We have pretty high purchase limits uh, in our community because that's based on sales prices within the city. Um, so there are, there is a difference between existing and new homes uh, as to what those purchase price limits are. As of right now, most of our sales are new homes, and so they're the same, so I only have the one standard. But for, you know, a standard single-family home, you're looking at a purchase price limit of two hundred and forty-seven thousand. As far as rent limits go, uh, you know, generally, it would be fair market rents. So for a one-bedroom, again, these are also pretty high. For a one-bedroom, it's around eight hundred dollars. For a three-bedroom, you're looking at up to fourteen eighty-three. That 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 would be the cap. Again, those are just adjusted annually based on the rents. Uh, and it's based on, I believe, forty percent of the area median rent that is that is here. So it's partially based on market prices, but it's below market prices, which is why it's considered the fair market rent. Uh, for Lytech, if a property has uh, is awarded a low-income housing tax credit by the Iowa Finance Authority, that's an affordable housing subsidy program that can be specifically applied in certain areas. Those rent limits are based on the income of the person in the. Those rent limits are based on the income of the person in the unit. And you would have differing rents for differing units depending on their distribution. So it's pretty complicated. But if you're looking at, for example, someone who's making sixty percent AMI, which is what we would restrict folks. Within a rental unit, you're looking at rents that are higher than the fair market rents at more than a thousand for a one-bedroom. About thirteen hundred forty-seven for a two-bedroom or fifteen hundred fifty-five for a three-bedroom. So those are higher rent limits, but those are governed by the Iowa Finance Authority. And that's why we provide an exception for projects that get that funding. Because they'll they'll have a different set of standards to follow.
Okay, Kirk, I have a few questions. I'm so sorry. Can you go back one one slide? I'm having trouble understanding. So you're saying that this income limit that you're showing. Okay, the sixty percent. A MI, right?
Yes.
So for a family of four, the limit would be, let's say, sixty thousand. Okay, and then and then can you show again the what the price of the units would be? Like per the rent. I think it was like.
The next slide.
Yep.
Okay, so the fair market rent. Does it mean that that is affordable? Is that the same?
It varies over time. But generally, a household making sixty thousand dollars, if you're expecting them to spend thirty percent. Of their income on housing, which is if they're spending less than thirty percent, it's considered affordable. They would be spending up to fifteen hundred dollars on rent. So one, two, and three-bedroom units would be affordable to a household that's sixty percent AMI approximately.
Okay, so but my question is like, here, fair market rent means affordable. Is that what what it means?
No, it's a different set of rent standards based on the fair prices of rents within the metro.
Okay. So this would be the rent limits that this places will have, right?
Correct.
Okay, and can you go back two slides? I'm so sorry, but I'm so confused. Okay, here, when you say income limit, less than eighty percent of the AMI. So that number can can we change that number to something lower? Or is that something that cannot be modified? Because eighty percent, that would be, they like a family would have to make eight, less than eighty percent. Of an area medium income. Right? That seems that seems high to me.
Eighty thousand dollars for an owner occupied property? That that would be someone making eighty thousand dollars or a family of four making eighty thousand is eighty percent AMI.
Right, and it's less than, so they could make sixty thousand dollars. And still meet that standard because it's less than eighty percent, right?
Yeah, and and so what we base these standards on, our HUD has. Its definition of low and moderate income is eighty percent is that upper limit. So that's where we have the eighty percent homeowner limit. And for rental households, the home program uses sixty percent. Again, this is what we use in our front crossings. As to if you could change it, just because we do have some more to go on, I I think that we can talk about this more for our discussion next week. You you know, you'll be considering whether you want to recommend this to council or not, and your comments will be included in that as well.
Okay.
So so I don't wanna, I don't wanna push along the presentation, but I know that.
No, it's okay. Yeah, we can. Sorry, we can keep moving. I just, I was very confused. I'm always confused about the AMI. And like all these numbers that, yeah, we can keep moving.
Yeah, it's not super clear, but we can try and. And and prepare something for you to consider next time too, about how we came up with these limits, what they mean in more concrete terms than these abstract numbers.
Because like especially here in this slide, you you're saying that the rent limit is. Let's say for one bedroom, one thousand four hundred, that seems really high. I mean, my my mortgage is like half of that and I live in like a house.
It is a very high rent limit.
And this would be considered affordable?
That is considered what is affordable based on the income of someone making eighty percent AMI. So that's thirty percent of someone making eighty percent AMI.
Okay, so the developer could put that price on a one-bedroom. Apartment and then get the twenty, get get all the benefits of having affordable. Being, you know, qualified as renting affordable. An affordable bedroom apartment, one-bedroom apartment. And the apartment would be one thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and it would be one room.
So they would only be able to do that if they're awarded low-income housing tax credits, which requires a mix of different. Market rate and affordable units.
Right, so they would, on top of that, they would get a tax credit. And this is really high, like my point is like, one thousand four hundred and ninety-six is doesn't seem affordable to me. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, we can keep moving. Thank you.
Or can I just add something? I I think we have more flexibility on changing the AMI standards than we do these rent limits. The for the low-income housing tax credit limits. These are the limits that would only be applied to projects that receive tax credits from the state. And if they receive tax credit from the state, we cannot ask the developer to lower the rents. These are the rents that they would be required to pay or be required to charge through that program.
Yeah, those those are set by the Iowa Finance Authority, right? So we have no discretion on that.
The fair market rents are the the standard rent that would be provided with bonus units. Unless they happen to get Lytech, which is not common. You maybe have. A Lytech project every year, every other year. So. Most of these units, we would expect to be under fair market rent.
I think the discretion, sorry, this is Sarah Hechtone, the City Attorney's Office. The Lytech standards are set, like you said, by state regulations. I think where the discretion comes in is whether. Planning and zoning and the city council wants to. Provide additional incentives for Lytech projects. You can't really change the structure of the Lytech program. But what's being proposed here is to allow these additional incentives for Lytech. Projects. Does that make any more sense? I don't know if that helps clarify.
But I but I think the problem is you're calling this affordable housing and it really is not affordable to those people that that are low income. It's not affordable. But we keep, we keep throwing out that jargon and it's 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 a lie.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my point. That's my point. That's exactly my point. We can not call it affordable. And then it has a report showing what how much affordable housing is in the city. This will count as affordable and it's not affordable. It's not affordable.
You know, I I've been around the. The affordable housing issue for for some time now. And and I don't know if if they've increased those limits recently or something like that, but I would, I agree with their. With everyone else, the and I understand we can't do anything about it. I I I get it. Other than than go to the State House and in this environment, that's probably not gonna change. But.
But if you've got.
Dollars, fifteen hundred dollars is not affordable to anybody for one.
No. But the the big question is, how can with this L this LIHTC rent limit? If they get the tax credit, it's fourteen hundred. But fair market is. Less than that.
Eight hundred.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, yeah.
Right, so there's kind of two programs that we're talking about here. And so I think where council and P and Z does have more discretion is in the sort of fair market rent. You know, the the structure that's being created by this. Code change. The Lytech structure is kind of a separate. Animal, and then where we have our own sort of program. And so we're offering incentives for both of those programs here.
I am interested in increasing the, see, very few Lytech projects get built. And if we can do something to encourage more Lytech projects. We will increase the pool of affordable housing. It may not be as affordable as you want, but it helps increase the overall pool. Because right now, not much of it's being built at all. And so we, if we can create some incentives for those, because we're getting the. The reason they're spending their money is because they're gonna get their tax credits through the Iowa finances or qualifying for their programs. And so we need to help encourage them to do that, or else it won't get built at all.
But but how far off, I mean, I look at those limits and. Quite frankly, they're not terribly far off of market rate.
No, they're more higher than market rate.
Who's benefiting from that is the developer? And. This is, I I gotta say, I I've been around this stuff. I've heard this this term and. And projects, I know there's, I know there's groups in town who've done Lytech projects who are not gonna be very happy with this conversation. And with me, but wow, that's just, that's not affordable at all. And I and I agree with, I agree with what Billy said. If we if we say it is, we're kidding ourselves now.
Have to look at the percentages there. I mean, we're looking at the bottom line. I mean, eighty percent means they're making eighty thousand dollars. But if you move up to forty percent, where that family is on forty thousand dollars. And they need a two-bedroom apartment, that's nine hundred dollars, which is. Big difference from eighteen hundred dollars, which is at the eighty percent. I'm not saying where you want it to be, but but you gotta look at, it does go down as the as the income goes down.
Because we we do have to look at is make sure that the definition of affordable is if you're spending less than thirty percent of your income on your rent. And if they are spending thirty percent or less on the rent, by definition, it is affordable, even though the numbers seem high. We always have to keep in mind about the math, because you know, there's always sticker shock about these bigger numbers. But the AMI in Iowa City is the highest in the state, I'm pretty sure. And so we always have to keep that in mind. So maybe just saying to Kirk, maybe if maybe some examples would help illustrate this in a future presentation. So people can see thirty percent of the AMI and then what kind of apartment somebody would qualify for a house. Because it's just that sticker shock a little bit.
Well, yeah, yeah, it is. And I and if you can, if you guys can come up with a way to explain this, but you know. So the fair market rent limits, those numbers seem reasonable to me. I I just, I really, I guess, I'm confused about the other. If I had to, not knowing anything else than what we've talked about right here, I would say no incentives for LA for Lytech projects. And I know that's not gonna be a popular thing to say, but I let's see what I, let's see what the what staff can bring us next week to help those of us who are dubious understand.
So are there are there other programs for affordable housing besides just Lytech?
Yes, Lytech is a, Lytech is a specific program and I can bring you the. I can try to create a summary of the programmatic requirements. I don't think there would ever be a single Lytech project that would only have eighty percent. Most Lytechs that I see have a mix of sixty, forty, and thirty percent AMI historically. I've been out of the affordable housing game for a bit, but usually those are the the combinations. Maybe a couple eighty percent, but there's some level of averaging what your different income levels are. So you have a mix of income ranges to create cash flow within a property. I think they do allow a flat sixty percent to be the the rents used, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. We can answer that in the future.
Okay, and I think I think we may also be confused that these percentages are how much of your salary you're spending. For rent. Is that correct?
No.
No.
Percentages are based on your income. So eighty percent is considered low income. And they're based on basically what they take is they take eighty percent. What what is thirty percent of somebody makes eighty percent? That's the rent limit on that unit.
Okay.
But in the case of the sixty percent, they would take that sixty thousand, which is why it's roughly fifteen hundred or whatever it is for the sixteen percent.
Kirk, was the Delray project, was that Lytech funded?
Yeah, I think so.
Because that's a good example for people to see, I think.
That's one that's got a mix of thirty, forty, sixty, and I think they have a couple eighty, but. You also can't charge more than what the market would bear as well. So that's another factor where, you know, even if the rent limits are high and no one's gonna be able. Live there, then it doesn't matter. They can't charge that rent limit, so.
In another conversation that we were having in the Housing Commission before. Like in the last few months, right, before I left. And I don't know if this is true or not, because I didn't do any research. But some of the commissioners were saying that the problem in Iowa City is not the lack of affordable housing, because we have. And this is, again, this is what they were saying. I'm not sure if this is true or not, but they were saying that. We have a lot of affordable housing right now, units that are built and they are not being occupied. Because we need about more vouchers, so we need. If the city could create its own voucher program, then we could, you know, help people get into those units. Because. And again, I don't know if this is true or not. Maybe Kirk, do you know if this is true that like we have a lot of affordable housing units that are not occupied right now?
I haven't monitored for two years now or a year now, so I don't know. I think that the pandemic did a lot of stuff, but. I I would say, let. If you don't mind, can we table the affordable housing discussion and move on? Move on with the the code and we can discuss this in more depth next time and then I can get a better answer for you on that too. How does that sound?
Go for it.
Yeah, that's fine. Go for it.
Yes.
Silencer thing, and you can always email us your more specific questions too, and we can we can accommodate them. But I do want to be mindful of folks' time. So as far as requirements go, then. I'm probably gonna start to breeze over some of these things, but basically it has to be. The market rate and the affordable units have to be the same floor area, number of bedrooms and similar quality, or at least a similar proportion. So that's to prevent it where, you know, you say that you're providing affordable units, but instead they're half the size and half the bedrooms. So they really do have to be similar to to the existing market rate units. And they have to be equally distributed throughout the development and they have to be developed with the other units. So trying to get away from any any barrier that might be there to to have any affordable units developed concurrently. That are produced through this voluntary, through these voluntary incentives. For owner occupied units, they would, their income would be qualified prior to sale and it would have to be their primary residence. They can't rent it except for a bedroom. And if they sell it within that twenty-year span, they would have to sell it to an income-eligible household at either that HUD sales limit. With some. Some deductions for real estate commissions, closing costs or permanent capital improvements that would increase the value. But they can't levy any other fees to try and pass along the cost. It it still has to remain an affordable unit throughout those twenty years. As far as renter units, this is something where the owner would be responsible for a lot of this, where they have to income. Income certified each tenant annually prior to lease and then annually thereafter. And if there is a tenant who is doing well, they're in the affordable unit, they're really thriving at work, they get more money, they become over income. They continue to be income qualified until they vacate the unit, at which case, at which point it would be occupied by another income-qualified unit. Again, the rental rates for a rental unit are the HUD fair market rent is the basic one. But if they do get Lytech, then they would have those Lytech rents and we can prepare something for you on that in the future. And then the owner would be responsible for compliance that they would have to verify annually with the city, including their documentation for income certifications. So that is the last piece of the affordable housing. I still do have. Kind of three other general sections to cover that are no longer part of that Title fourteen, Chapter two H. Some of them are other changes to Title fourteen, some are changes to Title fifteen, which is the subdivision code. Title fourteen is the zoning code and then also the comprehensive plan would need to be amended as part of this. So the other changes here, a lot of them are pretty much administrative sorts of changes. So I have two sets of changes that are a little more than just administrative changes and then some that are more administrative. So the first is that in the sign regulations, there is a new subsection that you'll see. uh, in, in the appendix on other changes to Title fourteen. The biggest change is that you're applying the sign standards to these zones and what they look like. Generally, the only signs that are allowed are temporary signs and portable signs. Uh, but as you get into open subzones, which allow a greater variety of commercial uses, uh, you're also allowed to do porch signs and post signs. And as you get into more intense zones like the T-four Main Street zone, uh, pretty much all, all sign types are available. So it really depends on the, the intensity of the zone, the size of the buildings, uh, the uses that are allowed as to which signs are allowed. Um, it also creates new sign types, which is the porch sign and the post sign. You can see examples of it in this. Uh, they're pretty self-explanatory by their name, so I don't really need to go over that in detail, uh, but it'd be a sign fixed to your porch or a sign fixed to a post. The other larger changes that you'll see are in the definitions. Uh, so you'll see things that are new concepts that we've been discussing throughout this. You know, I've been talking about them throughout, so I'm not going to touch on them, but things like missing metal housing. You'll look at civic space definitions that we don't currently have, things like that. Uh, and it also clarifies other concepts as they apply to form-based codes. Uh, so there are form-based zones, uh, which zones those correspond to. There are some changes to how we define building height or frontages or parking setbacks. Uh, and, and then one more that is notable that we don't have currently in our zoning code is the half-story. So currently, if you have what would be considered a half-story under this, it's considered a full story under our zone. But because we actually look at stories in the zoning code, it creates a definition for that. The other mining changes or the other minor changes that I wanted to mention are in the introductory section, would provide some clarificatory language uh, in our off-street parking standards. Uh, we, you know, we talk about special vehicle parking in, in T-three zones. Uh, we also make sure that we apply zones and lighting standards and we apply zones to the woodland retention requirements. Basically, they're similar to their corresponding zones as residential single-family zones. And then sign definitions, that's another section of the code where we add those two, uh, sign types that I mentioned. The other piece i- is something where you, you as the Planning and Zoning Commission don't recommend changes to Title fifteen, which is the subdivision code. Uh, but because it incorporates the way that these things work, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of them and how, how the subdivision code fits in with the zoning code changes as well. So the first is the plating and plating procedures, or plaits and plating procedures. A lot of the changes that you'll see if you look through it are housekeeping items. Um, so adding a step for supplemental review and departmental titles and positions, those are all out of date, so we're updating them while we're monkeying with the code already. Uh, the other two items that are larger changes are what's reflected in the preliminary plat. So as I had stated earlier, the way where a lot of these standards will be implemented is in the preliminary plat. So that's where they'll have to show design sites, thoroughfare types, civic space types and building types. And they'll also have to include notation, uh, about connections to adjacent properties and notations a- about which things can be substituted for, for other types. So specifically civic space, civic space and building types especially. And then the neighborhood plan is a new document that would be submitted with the final plan, and that's where the rest of this would be implemented. So it's very similar to what's in a preliminary plat, it would have all those items, but it would also include frontage types as well. So that's the document where you could look in the future and say, oh, this is what was expected to be here. It'll be checked upon a building permit or site plan. So that's how we'll, we'll make sure that these standards are being met.
That will only apply to plaits for this particular area of the city? Or is it now for everything?
It'll be only for this area of the city, area subject to the form-based standards.
Yes, because like design sites isn't a term that's used anyplace else, or?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
And then we get into some of the design standards. Uh, this, this is a different chapter of the subdivision code. So we have some that are related to streets and some that are related to blocks. Uh, generally, uh, it adds some language about, you know, promoted connect connectivity throughout the city, promoting most mobile transportation, uh, that there has to be appropriate transitions between thoroughfare types. Uh, but it also requires that the right-of-way's or the, the streets have to abide by the thoroughfare type standards that those thoroughfare type standards have to rely on the future land use map that would be in the comprehensive plan. Um, and then where there are variations, um, they have to meet specific criteria similar to what, what is required in rezonings where we have specific criteria that are required. So in this cases, if there are sensitive areas, they can, they can shift things. You can substitute thoroughfare types except for those major streets that I had noted, so South Gilbert, Lehman, Sycamore, and McAllister. Uh, you can change the alignment in the block orientation. And this was a question that you had, you know, how do we ensure that, that something similar is created? And, and it's the standards in these, in the subdivision code. So alignment can change, but the connections to existing street subs have to stay. Uh, they have to continue to cr- abide by the block standards, uh, which I'll go over in a second. Uh, and single-loaded streets will need to continue to abut civic or open space. So the reason that we have these standards here is because that was what was used to design this code. And the, the, the point of these standards is that if there are changes to it, it would create a similar outcome uh, to what, what is currently, or what we would propose to show in the future land use map. The other changes are tied to passages which can replace a thoroughfare type as long uh, as the design site has some sort of vehicular access, whether that be an alley or a street. Uh, and then alleys, uh, they can be added i- i- if a developer would like to take advantage of some of those other benefits of alleys. Or they could be removed as long as those sites have access to adjacent streets uh, other than McAllister or South Gilbert. So I kind of talked about that a little bit already, but this is really where those standards are, are, are defined. And then for the blocks and block lengths, uh, future-based or form-based code zones uh, have a different set of block standards than we currently have. So currently we require uh, them to be between three, three hundred and six hundred feet. Uh, there's an opportunity to lengthen them. Uh, in this case, again, we say that the block network has to comply with the comprehensive plan. Um, and the block lengths and perimeters have to comply with the block size standards table. Uh, but that, those with passages can be longer. So with these standards, the blocks are shorter than we would currently allow typically. Uh, in most T-three zones, uh, the maximum block length would be five hundred feet. And as you get into the more intense zones, the T-four zones, uh, you're looking at three hundred and sixty feet. So those could be extended with the pedestrian passage in the middle of the block to provide that pedestrian connectivity. Uh, that would increase them to eight hundred feet and six hundred feet respectively, except in the Main Street zone, which would retain a five hundred-foot maximum block length. And then there are also perimeter standards, so you don't have superblocks uh, where you have really, really large areas of no street connectivity. Um, so that further reinforces these block size standards. And then finally, we have the comprehensive plan draft and changes to that. So for the comprehensive plan draft, this is specifically located in the South District Plan. Uh, the reason that we have to amend the comprehensive plan is because we're relying on the future land use map, which is more detailed and is not currently in the South District Plan. Uh, this plan was initially adopted in twenty fifteen, which is kind of what kicked off this journey down the, the form-based code path. Uh, one of the objectives in it was to adopt a form-based code for the South District, and this is our most recent, uh, plan. Uh, like I said, it, it's pretty well supported by it already, but we do have some additional updates in here other than just the future land use map. But really it's to facilitate the adoption of it. We have some information in there and then we also wanted to reflect some current priorities of council uh, as we're, as we're looking at the code or as we're looking at this plan already. So those changes then are specifically to update some background and context to generalize more specific language based on the new future land use map, uh, to modify some goals and objectives. Uh, to discuss form-based codes generally and how they fit in. And then the updated future land use map, which is the important piece as far as the rest of this code applies. So for updates and context, these are probably, uh, you know, they're, they're included to really reflect those council objectives and to make sure that the code is up to date since we're updating the code anyway. So we include input for the form-based code process. Uh, we, we provide some additional context in here that wasn't included in the original regarding the history of native persons, uh, regarding the implications of past planning practices as it relates specifically to equity and sustainability. Uh, and then recent equity and sustainability initiatives. So you'll see those changes in there. And then we also discuss development that has happened since the code was adopted. Uh, and we generalize some language in the plan in the Housing, Transportation and Commercial Areas section. So there's some very specific recommendations in there, uh, that don't uh, always align with the future land use map that's being proposed. Uh, so we generalized that, uh, but they still, it does still generally comply without those changes, but we wanted to make it a more explicit to facilitate that adoption. And then there's a new chapter on form-based codes, which discusses what they are and how they're implemented in the South District. So it's some of the information that you've heard through the zoning code, but it's a more general overview. That is carried out through the zoning and subdivision code. Now, we also added in some new goals and objectives that more explicitly link the goals of the form-based code with the goals of the plan. Like I said, these may or may not need to be added, but we wanted to explicitly address, uh, some of these ideas. Um, so one of them is in housing, there's a new goal and objective, which is to provide a diversity of housing in the South District, including a range of housing types, densities and price points to improve equity and sustainability, and the objective is to adopt a form-based code. Um, so that reflects a lot of other goals that are also in, for example, the broader comprehensive plan. Uh, it's in lots of our city documents. And so we just incorporated it here as it relates to the comprehensive plan, or as it relates to the form-based code. Uh, we also added in an objective into the streets, trails and sidewalks, uh, condition, uh, goal, excuse me. And that is to adopt a form-based code that promotes walkable neighborhoods and encourages the use of alternative modes of transportation uh, and reduces car dependence. So again, really explicitly linking the goals of the form-based code to the South District. Uh, and then the commercial areas, we added in a new objective again uh, to the goal regarding redevelopment and commu- commercial areas. And that is adopting a form-based code that provides for a compatible mix of non-residential uses, including commercial nodes that serve the needs of, of the neighborhood. So realistically, these are the goals that led us to uh, looking at a lot of the form-based codes. A lot of these goals are implicit uh, within the code, but they're not explicitly linked to form-based standards, and so that's really what these objectives do. And then the more important piece, uh, i- is right at the end of the South District. And I've been showing you bits of this throughout. Uh, a- as we're looking at the future land use map that is currently within the plan, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the plan, uh, missing metal housing types, there's a whole uh, page on it essentially, and what new neighborhoods should look like. Uh, and, and this was the future land use map that was used. Um, but that being said, you know, it talks about missing metal housing types, but it has some pretty specific uses, it follows a more conventional use standard rather than focusing on the form, uh, of, of missing metal housing types. And so the change that is made to the existing future land use map is for greenfield areas to where this would be applied. Um, we created a area subject to form-based standards, and that is referenced throughout, you know, the subdivision code that we're talking about. Any new development has to reflect the future land use map with more explicit regulations of what that looks like. And then within these areas, we have the future land use maps that you've been seeing, uh, that, that's much, much more detailed uh, within greenfield sites. So I, this time I marked where the streets were so you could get an idea, but again, uh, South Gilbert's kind of that west uh, side, uh, you have Soccer Park Road on the south, you have Sycamore Avenue going through the center, and then McAllister you can see, uh, goes through the center, east and west. And this is what rezonings would have to comply with. Uh, you would have block standards that have to comply with that, and you would have thoroughfare types. And then there's another related future land use map specifically for thoroughfare types, uh, which, which I had discussed already, but th- this would be where that would be implement or incorporated into the South District Plan. So I thank you for bearing with me. Uh, again, I know that going through code can be pretty tedious, but I, I do appreciate uh, you giving me the time, uh, to do this. As far as next steps, then, the next meeting is August fifth, uh, where you will be discussing any questions or clarifications you'd like. So that's where we'll try to, to give you some more information on affordable housing. Uh, we'll talk about public comments, uh, received thus far. So though we will accept public comments throughout the time, uh, they'll be provided to you specifically on August fifth and before August nineteenth. And if we receive it the Friday before, it'll be in your packet. Otherwise, uh, we'll, we'll try to create some sort of summary memo for you on that. Uh, and at that meeting, you would also set a public hearing for the comprehensive plan. Uh, as far as the rest of the adoption schedule looks, you would actually be considering uh, a recommendation on the form-based code and the comprehensive plan amendment at your August nineteenth meeting. Uh, and then into September and October is when council would be setting their public hearing uh, and considering the code and the plan. So like I said, public comments are accepted throughout. Again, you can find information on the website about how to contact us. Uh, you can email members of staff and that'll get through to us. You can send us letters. Otherwise, you as the commission, uh, can, can speak directly to us or, or send us your comments or questions. And August fifth will provide some opportunity to discuss them, uh, to kind of break it up, and then August nineteenth is where you'll actually be considering it. So you should have some time to mull these things over. Again, it's a lot to, uh, to process. Like I said last time, it's like drinking from a fire hose. Uh, but I appreciate, appreciate the time you've provided and I can answer some questions now, but I also know that it's nine o'clock and I don't want to belay to the point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Um, very impressive work and I'm amazed that you were able to keep talking without a failure of your voice, so kudos to you. Or do commissioners want to ask Kirk questions right now, or do you want to formulate your questions and have them ready for him on August fifth? That seems to me to be a better idea, but.
I just have one question. Uh, these new, um, codes, are they, are you planning to replace all of the codes with these eventually? I mean, if they work in, on the south side, will it eventually take the place of, of what we've been doing?
And I don't know if you want to cover that.
Sure, I can cover that. So right now, um, we're just looking at this nine hundred acres in the South District, but eventually we would like to apply this code to other greenfield, greenfield areas that are at the fringe of the community. Some of those areas are still in unincorporated Johnson County, but are likely to be annexed at some point. So the idea is that would, it would eventually, um, apply to other greenfield sites as well.
So we'll actually be working with two sets of codes now. One for, well, for, for the old stuff and.
We have, I would say four, actually.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Okay.
Just for next time, for next time. Um, one of the things that I haven't fully wrapped my head around is this form versus use concept and discussion. And so if you could, if you guys could uh, provide something or present something that kind of helps. You know, so my, you know, my understanding of form versus use is if I, if I built a, a single-family two-story home that fits in one of these blocks, I could open whatever business I wanted to in that, in that house. Um, you know, that, that's my interpretation right now. So I, I, um, would love to hear more on that topic next time.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and if commissioners have any questions, they'd like staff to be prepared for to discuss on our next meeting, August fifth, please forward those to staff so they can have an opportunity to prepare. So the next item on the agenda is item number five. Commission input on the use of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Anne, is this yours?
Yeah, um, I hope you all had a chance to read the letter from Rachel Kilburg, our Assistant City Manager about those funds. The city is currently in the process of taking comments on how the funds should be used. Um, I put it on the agenda in case there were any ideas that the commission wanted to discuss tonight. But, um, there is an online survey and you can each individually go and take the online survey or send an email to the email address that was in the, the letter as well. Um, so you can, if you want to have a discussion now, that's fine, but you can also just, um, share your comments through those links. share your comments through those links at a later date.
I have a couple of things. I'd just like to get into the minutes if I can, and maybe this just gets some other people to think. I'd really like to see the city aim this towards affordable housing and affordable quality childcare, particularly in the qualified census tracts. Because in the QCTs, that's presumed and a presumed eligible expenditure. So it's something we could start working on right away. We don't have to prove the compliance with ARPA regulations. Also very interested in housing rehabilitation, particularly in the concept that I know the city is working on a while ago. I don't know where it's at now for the healthy and safe homes, particularly looking at asthma mitigation in children, lead pipe elimination for water distribution, and then mold abatement in the homes and then taking care of the leaking problems that are allowing the mold to to form in the first place. Those are just some particularly on all those I'm really talking about primarily in the QCTs. But anywhere in Iowa City, just the QCTs are much easier. So I'd just like to throw those out and get those into the minutes for some suggestions for ARPA funding.
I think I would be interested. Oh, sorry. Do you have anything else?
No, I just could ask for if anybody had any ideas. Go ahead, Maria.
Yeah, so I would like to see the council or the staff to look into using this money or part of this money also to create our own local voucher program. You know, for affordable housing or like see how that will work or how much how much we could use on something like that and how much would that would that help the city?
Any other comments for commissioners they've thought about?
Oh, Mark, you're on mute.
Mark, you're muted. We can't hear you. We can see you talk.
That's probably preferable, isn't it? There's a, there's a lot of opportunity there and there's a lot of a greater need. And I I would be anxious to hear, I'm going to go online and take a look at what other people are saying, because I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm qualified to really comment on those.
Any other commissioner have a comment they'd like to make?
Well, I filled it out online when it first came out, so I left my personal things there at the beginning of the process. But I I didn't think about your childcare issue, Mike, and I think that that is a very good thing, and I just want to put in a second voice for that.
Because probably the biggest obstacle for working class and poor people is not only affordable childcare, but affordable quality childcare.
Exactly, exactly. You know, when grandma is taking care of poor kids, it's not quite the same.
Okay. If no other comments, we'll go
I agree with I agree with the childcare issue. I would like to see like a program on childcare or some money going to childcare.
Thank you, Maria. Item number six, discussion on returning to in person meetings. Ann?
So I expect our meeting on August fifth to be in person. I guess I wanted to know if the commission is comfortable going back to Emma Harbet Hall.
I am because I'm fully vaccinated and I'm very comfortable with this, but I'll only speak for myself. So I'm completely comfortable going back to Emma Harvet.
I'm
I'm fully vaccinated, vaccinated, but not driving yet, but I'll see if I can bum a ride.
I can give you a ride home, Billy.
Okay.
You live down the street.
Be honest, I just missed the opportunity to interact with all you folks.
I'm about four weeks out.
Okay, I, we can look for a bigger space if needed. But if everyone's okay with Emma Harbet, we'll we'll plan on that.
All right. Item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes from July one, twenty twenty one. Does anybody have any major corrections or additions to the minutes they would like to articulate?
They were long.
And if not, could we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by signs, we've got a motion by Townsend, second by signs, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Number eight, Anne, planning and zoning information.
I don't think I have really any updates. I wanted to go back to though the form based code and encourage you. If you don't even have any questions, like specific questions, if there's specific sections of the code that you want us to provide more clarity on, just just send us an email and we'd be happy to do that.
I I just am amazed that you've gotten this far because I remember meeting with Opticos on a one on one meeting. I don't, it seems like ten years ago at this point. And so I'm very happy and very impressed with you folks for getting this worked on. Just to let everybody know, I I'm ninety nine percent positive, I will not be present for the August fifth meeting. I'll be in Colorado with my sons. So Mr. Science, will you be around?
I will start preparing now.
Bless your heart.
I have a question for staff, which isn't, you know, it's just my my curiosity. And people ask you things when you're on the planning and zoning commission, and they think you know what's happening to every piece of property in town. But the the land that has been cleared on the south side of Highway six and Kekuk, is there anything in the works for that, or is it they're just getting ready to create something?
They're actually been there for the last two days moving dirt and ripping up concrete. So if you drive by again, you already see a change.
And 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 I'm happy to announce that what's going in there is Quick Star.
Okay.
And they have some of the best baked goods and ready to eat foods of eighteen I've ever seen.
I've seen their ads on television and always thought, well, I don't think there is a quick star around here.
There will be by December.
Okay, wow, by December.
That's their goal.
That's if they can buy a refrigerator. I'm telling you. Tomorrow that was ordered in March.
If and if they can find help, they've had help wanted signs out on the streets, corners of the property for like three months already, and they haven't even started digging till this week.
Any other P and Z information from members of the commission? Seeing none, entertaining motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by signs, is there a second?
Second.
Townsend by Townsend. We have a motion second discussion, hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays passes unanimously. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Take care. Nice seeing you, everybody.
Thank you, Kirk, for a great presentation.
Thank you, Kirk.